Having a quorum, we're going to go ahead and get started and hopefully Dr. Kelling and Mr. Spicer will be arriving soon, but I will call this meeting to order. I don't have my at 5:34. I'll call it to order at 5:34, this special, our study session, this Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Edward Beldon.
Please stand, face the flag, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call then.
Councilmember Beldon.
Here.
Jimenez.
Here.
And Mayor Shevlin.
Here. Okay, public input. Do we have anyone wanting to provide public input on this agenda item? On our agenda item today?
Madam Mayor, I did have a speaker card for Ian Mottkin. He doesn't appear to be in here, so.
Okay, all right, then I will go ahead then and close our public input and move on to our discussion. Further discussion regarding proposed inclusionary housing ordinance, and I believe I'm turning this over to Ms. Burmeil.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you very much. This is our third study session on the topic of inclusionary housing and over the course of the last study sessions, we've learned a lot. And I think our last meeting was on December 17th and the takeaway that staff took was, you know, there was no doubt that affordable housing is desired by all. What we did also learn is that the views varied regarding the applicability, the affordable housing requirement, and the alternative means of compliance for a requirement. And at the conclusion of the December 17th meeting, the City Council turned, gave some city staff directives. We conducted two surveys, which we're going to provide you some information on tonight, and also kind of weave in some of the questions that were asked, provide you answers to those questions. So tonight's study session, put together this agenda, I wanted to kind of go over the best practices, key concepts in inclusionary housing when drafting an ordinance. We're going to go over the survey results and then we're going to provide you with staff's recommendations. We're going to have time for questions and answers and then next steps. Now, do you have several, about 30 slides, so it might be helpful as I'm going through them, we want to jot down your questions.
And questions at the end?
Might, yeah, that might help me with my train of thought, but I appreciate it. Okay, so let's get started. I think going through our key concepts and best practices, staff wanted to reiterate that inclusionary housing and ordinance that requires inclusionary housing is just one planning tool to meet the city's regional housing needs assessment. Over the course of the last 15 to 20 years, the city has implemented many programs that have been working on housing production. And so we thought it'd be good to just highlight some of those. The first was the expansion of the Station Square area, and this facilitated not only the Alexan project, but it added additional higher-density housing area between Magnolia and Mayflower. We adopted, the City Council adopted the housing element in 2022, an ordinance to reduce the minimum unit size for multifamily housing, and that was in 2023. Developers can now propose smaller units, which lowers their construction cost and hopefully translates to lower rents. Last year, the City Council removed the conditional use permit requirement to facilitate multifamily housing. And then we also adopted objective design standards to take out the uncertainty of project approvals. And then, right out of the gate in 2025, the City Council adopted the update to the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which actually goes into effect tomorrow. And that's not it, more housing programs to be implemented are underway. Another key component and takeaway of inclusionary housing is that it's important to remember that each city has a very unique economic, demographic, and housing market conditions. So an inclusionary housing ordinance is really not intended to be a one-size-fits-all. It's really best put into practice when it's city-centric. The real estate markets, construction costs, and values between cities vary. The demand for affordable housing and the income levels and population growth differ between cities. If we were to look at all the average rents across the cities, the affordability gaps between the production of housing and what an affordable, an average rent is, varies. The zoning laws also vary, so some cities have deeper or denser zoning designations that allow for denser projects. Others don't have as much density in their general plan. And then developers also face different financial constraints and incentives in each cities. Every city has a unique tailored development impact fee program based on their city's needs. And then, of course, different varying types of incentives. And I think another key piece of this is that the community priorities offer also vary from city to city based on things that are important to each of the cities. So thinking about housing emphasis and how the city of Monrovia has been preparing for housing, before we get into the staff's recommendation, I think providing an overview of traditionally where our dense housing has been planned. Early in the 2000s and even before that, the goal was always to put higher-density housing, and these are areas that offer, that allow for 54 units or more, on sites that are close to transit priority areas are most, could offer the most walkable communities where they're close to goods and services. And so, Monrovia's key planning areas that have been visioned have always been, in our current land use element, Station Square Transit Village, South Myrtle Avenue Corridor, and West Huntington Drive. And in this planning process, one of the other key components of understanding the setting for this land use plan was that Monrovia has always cherished their older neighborhoods, right? It's the fourth oldest city in the county, it has a robust historic preservation program. And by focusing the higher-density housing in these areas, the goal was to offset neighborhood compatibility impacts and loss of resources in the other areas, the older neighborhoods of the city. So, thinking about inclusionary housing, I think the goal or takeaway is that it's to produce affordable units with minimal impacts on housing production and prices. And so, to get to that goal, it's a balancing act. And so, a lot of the information that staff has provided in our recommendations is to, we believe, is getting the city of Monrovia to that sweet spot. Getting the city of Monrovia to that sweet spot was, is really vetted in a feasibility analysis that was conducted by Kaiser Marston. And tonight, we have both Kathy Head from Kaiser Marston here with me and David Blumenthal from Sagecrest, who've been the technical, doing the technical work behind the scenes. Finding that right balance is understanding what the affordability gap is, and that's really a math problem that is looking at the difference between what a market rate new unit is and the difference between what an affordable housing unit would cost. And then, last but not least, it's important to kind of, the key takeaway is that a successful ordinance will impact developers. Very shortly, we're going to see what the surveys say. And it will create affordable units, but probably not as much as desired. And we can explain why as we go through this. Part of this balanced approach is creating a program that offers flexibility and development incentives, right? On the developer side, to help create a balanced approach. We heard 0% of 0 is 0, so we don't want to stop development, we want to encourage it, finding that sweet spot. It's also important to align the inclusionary housing threshold with the density bonus. And we're going to see that this best practice recommendation is being carried out in other cities, and it's something that the developers are also asking for. So let's dive into the surveys. So the first one was a survey of all cities within the San Gabriel Valley region. There's a total of 30 cities that make up our region. Working with Sagecrest, we did a partnership and we went back and we looked at all the cities within our region that have inclusionary housing ordinances. We found that 10 did. They were all very different. Some of the, of these 10 cities, we found that Pomona and South Pasadena stood out as cities that directly were able to produce affordable housing onsite. And Pomona offered a citywide approach, but a very low impact fee. South Pasadena, I believe, set their standard at 10 units or more, but offered a very high impact fee, a new fee to actually get the developers to build onsite. Monterey Park has faced the greatest challenges repeatedly, starting and stopping the process just based on feasibility concerns. And then Elmani and Alhambra have only had experience in using the in-lu fees. But talking with the various cities, collecting and looking at their ordinances, the main takeaway findings that are highlighted in the survey is that in order for the survey to be effective and successful, it needs to be city-centric. It also needs to provide flexibility, offering a range of options that are adaptable to market conditions. In all the cities, the ones that were most successful, I think Pomona comes to mind, really leveraged density bonus, their project developers really leveraged the waivers of development standards and concessions to price the project to make it financially feasible. And then, another key takeaway was the need to invest in a clear implementation process and both a clear assessment and monitoring process moving forward, should the ordinance be recommended. Now, for the developer survey, we took a survey, we looked at 18 firms. And the focus question, we looked at 18 firms, we, our target was developers, both small and large, who produce affordable housing, excuse me, multifamily housing in Monrovia, and also have the desire to produce more housing in Monrovia and have worked with other inclusionary housing ordinances within the city. And the focus questions that we asked were really to gain insight to the impact of affordability requirements on the development feasibility, their perspectives on the use of in-lu fees, any types of incentives that could offset affordability requirements, and challenges related, any type of challenge that they saw related to the compliance with the ordinance. We also allowed an open question for free-flow response. And in summary, the development developer feedback concluded that, you know, affordability requirements may deter small-scale developers. It's, the small-scale developers have the least practice working with inclusionary housing ordinances. They have the least resources to various subsidies, whereas the bigger developers are very familiar, they have, you know, their teams and property managers have learned the trade of managing affordable housing. Developers also indicated that in-lu fees are obviously most popular and, but sometimes often viewed too high. And then, they, all developers, you know, favored incentives, of course, to offset the affordability costs. Thinking about things that they desired and had concerns with, these came primarily from the open-ended question. Developers expressed concern regarding construction and financing challenges and administrative burdens, mainly again relating to the processing and checking of their applicants, rental applicants. And they expressed desire for an ordinance, you know, for a balanced approach ordinance that did align with state law. They were, everyone's coming to understand the terms of the state law, so when we align it, it's easy in their minds to adapt to those requirements. And again, more incentives and competitive in-lu fees. Okay, so now, we're ready to put all this together, and we are going to run through staff's recommendation. So, based on the survey input, the feedback that staff has received from council, the questions that staff has asked our consultants, staff is coming tonight to present and recommend what we believe is the best strategy for inclusionary housing. And we're going to run through these four components that really are the crux of an ordinance, which is the applicability, the affordable housing requirement, exemptions, and then alternative means to producing the unit. So the first piece of this is where would this, where does staff believe would be most advantageous to apply this requirement? And thinking about refraining from unintended consequences, when, if we were to have an ordinance that also runs in line with density bonus, we think that the areas to target high-density housing still remain to be those areas that are aligned with our general plan. And we've also built in, in this map, so I'm looking at these darker areas here. This is, this is South Myrtle Avenue Corridor. This is a planning area that offers 54 units to the acre. This is where Avalon Project is located. This is our Station Square South area. This area includes Station Square South, so PD 12. It includes the expansion of Station Square South, where the Alexan is, that's PD 27. It also wraps in the housing opportunity sites that were included in our housing element. And then, last but not least, it includes this other area along Huntington Drive. This is our West Mixed Use Corridor, where Fifth and Huntington is located. Now, aside from kind of directing the inclusionary housing requirement in these areas, we've also are recommending to build in some other catchalls. So for example, some state laws are being passed that could allow for residential housing projects by right on non-residential sites. So staff is recommending that any housing project on a non-residential site, regardless of whether it's by right, if you hit a threshold, this would apply. We've also wrapped in a requirement that builds in not only this housing cycle, we're halfway through our housing element cycle, so in two years, we're going to be talking about the next housing element. Any future housing opportunity site, arena site, will automatically be wrapped in to this. And then, any project applicant that comes to the city and wants to do a general plan zoning, land use amendment to either increase density or change their designation from non-residential to residential, we want to capture those projects too. So why does staff feel that the target area approach is a balanced approach? Well, first, we've spoken about it being aligned with the general plan vision. It focuses on protecting against impacts to neighborhood compatibility and the city's historic resources. It also, in particular, where density bonus could have impacts, right? The city staff looked at where in the city higher-density projects could be produced. Predominantly, those are your RH zoning, residential high zones. And in the areas that we had, we were planning for, those are areas that are not immediately adjacent to lower-density neighborhoods. And last but not least, there are still other state laws that help ensure that affordable housing is built back into a project if a developer comes forward and wants to develop, to demolish and build new multifamily housing. And that law is SB 330, Replacement Housing Evaluation. Staff also looked at, in the last three years, where permits have been issued for housing. So in 2022, 2023, and 2024, we said, where, how many units have reproduced in those three years? That total is about 941 units. You can see from this area, all of these projects are located in these high orange, highlighted orange parcels. There are just two projects that fall outside of those areas. One is the 910 Ivy Project down the street, that's not done yet. The other one is one project that's under construction still, and that's Olive and Walnut, and that's 11 units. Again, thinking about both of those two outliers, the surrounding properties to those are low-density, single-family, not your typical multifamily housing site, high-density multifamily.
Just for conversation, do you happen to have off the top of your head the number of four or less units that have been produced? Just curious.
I can, let me, let me look back. I might. I actually might have that, so, yeah. Okay, so now, we went over the area, now staff's recommendation is what would trigger the ordinance for an applicant to qualify. We're looking at recommendation for housing projects that are five or more units. Anything that produces five or more units, and that five or more unit category is key because it also is when the density bonus starts kicking in for projects to get concessions and waivers and density bonuses. The recommendation is if a developer is proposing a project that's for sale, that 10% of those units be designated for moderate income. And the rental, if it's for rental, we've broken it down into three categories. So the first category is for projects that are fewer than 20, so 5 to 20. Then the designation would be 6%, very low income. And then, projects that are between 21 and 49 units, 10% low income would be the threshold.
Sherri, on the 20 or fewer, you said very low. Is it low or very low?
It's low, yeah, it is low.
Okay.
And then, out, coming out of the last two study sessions, staff went back and had more consultation with our consultant to think about a higher tier, to offset, to drive affordable housing in these key areas. And so, we looked at, could we go higher on a 50, project that's 50-plus? And Kaiser Marston ran numbers and were able to confirm that a 15% could work. Don't have to include the 15%, but we include it in there for discussion purposes. Projects that would be exempted from this ordinance would be ADUs. State law does not allow us to record deed restrictions against ADUs. State law does not allow us to record deed restrictions against ADUs, any.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry. Can you go back to the other slide really quickly? For where it says 6% low income, I, what was the numbers prior to the revision?
Yes, so the, the, these, these are the same numbers. The only thing staff added for your consideration is that third tier.
Got it.
Which is the 50 plus.
What was it before, Sherry?
Before, it was everything, not including what they have a red asterisk on.
Why was it, what was the change? Why was it?
Yeah, so, you know, initially, going through all these discussions, remember when I started the presentation, I think the takeaway was everyone is in favor of inclusionary housing. And staff's goal with this presentation and this proposal was to find a balanced approach that every single council member or project or community, anyone who had input, felt that, okay, okay, I, I, that might work, that's a balanced approach. I think what what staff was feeling is there's, there's, you know, some, some folks may want a very high, high, high requirement, some may not want a high, high requirement. Our goal is to propose something that's not going to stop housing development, that's going to be financial, financially feasible for both the developer, that's going to produce affordable units, but maybe not as much as we really, really have our heart set on, but just because of feasibility.
Well, and the 50 plus also then captures all projects.
50 plus, big projects in those areas.
Could a developer get around the 15% low income by splitting up a project? So instead of having 50 plus units, it had 25 and 25?
Not, no, no. Under California Environmental Quality Act, you can't piecemeal projects, so, yeah. And there would be a date in the ordinance that looks at when, when the project's proposed and what's considered a project.
Okay.
Okay, so this is, we're almost to the end. So these are recommended exemptions. These are standard exemptions in most cities. And then what the recommendation is for an in lieu fee alternative. So there's really no change to this slide, other than staff is recommending a per square foot fee in lieu of a per unit fee. And the reason why is that it, those, these in lieu fees are more fair and financially feasible for your smaller developers. The in lieu fee option would only be available to all ownership projects and rental projects with 20 units or less.
Just on that, so you're saying that if you're developing 21 units or any of the other ones, you cannot use the in lieu fee?
It would be, you would be, the requirement would be onsite, and I think that's what we, that's what it says, yeah. Okay, so another, these are the last few sets of slides, is how do we calculate the fee? And I think understanding the calculation is also beneficial. So I have three scenarios. The first one is there's a vacant piece of property, developer proposes a five unit project, and hypothetically, each unit is 1,500 square feet. Okay, so I put some math up there. We have five units, we're going to multiply that by 1,500 square feet, and then we're going to take that and multiply it by the per square foot of $24.50. That's the rental per square foot in lieu fee. Under this project, the developer would be responsible for paying $183,750. Scenario two, we have an existing property that has three units, and the developer wants to add two apartments. Okay, this is a rental project, so we're going to use the $24.50 per square foot. Now, this is the, the in lieu fee is only applicable to the new units that are added to the site. So we take two units times 1,500 times our in lieu fee. This project would have a requirement of paying $73,500. So the takeaway on this one is the five plus threshold is triggered when the total resulting units on the site is five or more, but the fee is charged on the new construction. And then this is my last example, this is scenario three for the ownership proposal scenario. Developer proposes to build a 50 unit townhouse development with four sale units. The four sale fee is a little bit higher, it's $29.40. So here, we're going to take the number of the units by the square footage, resulting in a $2,205,000 in lieu fee.
For that example, how many units would they normally be on the hook for? If they were going to put them in themselves?
Uh, well, let me run that. 2.5. Look how quick my, my mind worked.
Is it 10%?
No, it was 15, I think, for 50.
Ownership, so it's 10%.
Isn't it 10% of 50? No, it's five units.
It's five units.
I thought it was 5%. I'm sorry.
Okay, let, let me double check really quick.
That's fine.
Yeah.
It's 10.
I can go back in time.
Just confirming, if you go back to, as shown on slide, excuse me, slide 20, slide 20, if it's an ownership project, it's 10%. If it's a rental project for 50 units, it's 15%.
There we go. All right, thank you, Dylan.
But the in, in lieu fee is only.
In lieu fee is only applicable to ownership and projects that are small, 20 or less.
Less 20 or under.
Yep. And then, last but not least, when thinking about alternative means to comply with the ordinance, staff is recommending not only the in lieu fee, but the ability to do off-site construction and land donations, and this is very consistent with what other cities allow for. I don't know how much land can be donated, but it's, it's worth, it's a worth incentive to include.
Can you actually give us an example then of off-site affordable?
A project? I'm going to have, I'm going to turn that over to our consultant for those questions. And then thinking about these, the next steps, right? Before we go into our question and answer session, if we arrive at a recommendation on inclusionary housing this evening, staff would need to go back and finalize the ordinance and make any final adjustments, make sure they go through thorough legal review. We would also want to present it with a density bonus ordinance to couple it and start the public hearing process, which would require an advisory review before the planning commission, and then public hearing for adoption before city council. So with that, I'd like to bring up my other partners in crime here, and we can start taking, taking questions. The first one, I think, was the mayor's question regarding how an off-site contribution would be fulfilled.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Chair of the Council. So the, the simple answer to that is a developer comes in, they're not an affordable housing developer, they would work with a affordable housing developer, purchase a second property, and have that affordable housing developer provide the land. There are developers like National Core, who all they do is build and manage affordable units. So that, they coordinate with larger developers to get some of that land to build.
So in that scenario, then, that off-site project wouldn't have its own requirements for the density, it would be fulfilling what it is for the other project?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Any, are you, are you finished?
Yes.
I have a question, but it's more probably for city manager. Is the idea that all these funds that we're collecting in lieu of fees from developers, is the idea to set these funds apart in a separate account that would further affordable housing in Monrovia?
Correct. So the in lieu fee is providing an alternative to developers in the event that they don't or can't, or for whatever reasons, don't build themselves. I think ideally, number one scenario is we want them to build the affordable housing on their project. But it's the best practice, it's recommended, we provide an alternative. So if they do pay an in lieu fee, be calculated, community development, it goes into a separate fund, it's treated separately, it's not commingled with other funds, and it would be restricted in its use, which the city would have to use that money to secure affordable housing elsewhere.
So then be up to the city to provide the affordable housing?
Correct.
I have a question, and this might be Dylan can answer, or maybe, well, should there, is there a cap on the in lieu projects, in lieu fee projects that come into Monrovia? So for example, if we have five developers and they all come and they're all saying, we'll pay the in lieu fee, but we're not going to provide the affordable housing for whatever reason, is there some sort of cap that we'll have to say, because ultimately we want the housing. So if we get a lot of people that won't provide housing, but will provide money, money's good, but ultimately, we want affordable housing, people need to, a place to live. So I don't know who can answer that, if you understand what I'm saying.
Maybe I can take the first shot at it. I think ultimately, the, the, the funds that we would be collecting from those developers would be equivalent to the difference between a market rate unit and that affordable unit. We would also recommend, I was confirmed with the city attorney, we would recommend that the council review those established fees annually to make sure that we're adjusting them according to just change in market conditions, CPI index, and so on and so forth. But, but right now, there's not currently proposed to be a cap, primarily because if we did institute a cap, how, how would we decide which developer had the cap, which projects can allow for it or not? So it's provided essentially an option to them, so that in the event that they can't do it, a great example, there's a lot of condo type development that happens with smaller projects, but we're not seeing condos owner, ownership type projects for larger projects. They just become very big to build, very expensive to build, difficult to insure, and they're very heavily litigated. And so I think that the goal is provide alternatives for the, all the different types of housing projects out there.
And Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, what I'd like to just look, if we can look at this history of where permits are issued and how the, the requirement to place these units onsite, the majority of all of our large housing projects are greater than 20 units in our rental. So when we look at a number of 940 units, all of those projects would have to, of the large areas, would be putting the units onsite. The in lieu fees for the, the smaller projects that are smaller sites.
They, they still have the option to use the in lieu fee?
I'm so sorry.
The bigger projects still have the option to use in lieu fee, I thought.
The, the option is only for ownership and for projects that are small, 20 or fewer units.
Can we confirm that?
Yeah, that, that is correct, too.
So they cannot use it when they're developing the large units?
Not the larger, as it's currently proposed, on the larger.
Rentals.
Okay.
I, I think I had a real concern, just thinking that developers would come in and say, I'd rather pay a fee, let the city of Monrovia worry about, about building the affordable housing, but I think with this very thoughtful restriction, that, that the in lieu fee only applies to the smaller developments, I think that that is, is the protection for that.
Larry?
I'm still thinking.
I'll, I'll go ahead now. No, no, go ahead.
So regarding the incentives, such as density bonus, fee reduction.
Turn your mic up.
Such as density bonuses, fee reduction, or expedited permitting are offered to developers to encourage compliance with the ordinance?
Yes, so I'm going to show you, I have a little extra slide here. And this is thinking about options that are, that are incentives that were most valuable to the developer. Of, of the folks that we got comments on, the density bonus was one of the biggest incentives for them, because it allowed them to get waivers and concessions on development standards. The second was parking reductions, which also is kind of tied into density bonus. I think we had one response regarding the expedited permitting, it looks like a lot there, are you able to give?
There were three, three people that said that they would like the expedited permitting.
And that's generally because more time in, in the, in the process costs money. And then the, the last column was for reduced fees. Staff is recommending the density bonus, which is going to capture parking, parking reductions and other types of alternative means of complying with the requirement.
One more question. So regarding the flexibility options, are there, how are the alternatives regulated?
So the, the recommended ordinance provides flexibility in a sense that the smaller projects, where they generally find most hardship on managing affordable covenants and running through the administrative burden, they can bypass that and do the in lieu fee. So that is being flexible with the smaller developers. And the second option for the alternative means is if a developer is not able or does not desire to produce the affordable housing onsite, but they do have another location where they can build it within the city limits, then that offers them another option to produce their affordable housing requirement.
And one last question, the timeline. What is the timeline for the implementation of the ordinance? And are these phased in, or is it immediate?
That, good question. So tonight, we're still studying the policy. If the council gives staff direction, we're going to, our goal, we need to bring back or process together both the inclusionary housing ordinance with the density bonus. Our desire is to get this to city council back in May, provided we don't have any hiccups along the way. It would be 30, 30 days after city council's adoption on the second reading before it's implemented. And the implement projects that have submitted complete applications through the city after the effective date of the ordinance would be, would be required to participate in this housing requirement.
Thank you.
You haven't noted.
It's not a question, it's more of a comment. I read over the ordinance, and I noticed a lot of our input in here, so I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work that went into implementing that, and it, it's, I noticed it, and I noticed the part with oversight. There was a lot of oversight in this, and that was a big concern, so, for me, so I appreciate that, by reading that.
Okay, I've, I've got a couple of questions here. On your, what is, what are you contemplating on the length of time for the covenant for the affordable units?
We would, we're recommending that they go in line with state law, so 55 years for rental, 45 for ownership.
Okay, all right. And then on the, my whole thing was the bonus density, because that's there now. And so how does that really play in with the, what we're talking about, the inclusionary housing? And how do we keep then the developers saying, well, I'm just going to go with the bonus density, and I'm, I'm just going to go for the max, and so you're going to end up with maybe a much denser project than you'd like. And I'm assuming then that bonus, I mean, the inclusionary would still require that affordable equation to be in that bonus density, but still the same, you'd end up with a much denser project. So how, how do we, when you talk about the balancing act, how do you, how do you not push a developer and to say, well, forget it, then I'll just do this bonus density, and I'll make it very dense?
Well, if they're in one of those target areas, they're likely going to be using the density bonus. We've seen projects already using the density. We've seen projects already using the density bonus in those areas voluntarily. The inclusionary housing ordinance is going to require it. And I think city council historically has been very thoughtful, knowing that the density bonus has the option of offering concessions and waivers of development standards, putting these higher density develops where we lose control of design. And areas where they're least going to impact the neighborhoods is part of our strategy.
The, a, or outside of those areas, I mean, the high density down by Station Square, say that we still have higher density in other parts of the city, but they are, they interface with single-family residential. I guess, that's what I'm talking about.
So what we did last year, staff did and city council adopted were objective design standards. So when they're using the density bonus, there are more standards that they'll have to consider when they're using their limited concessions and waivers. But ultimately, when a project starts evoking the density bonus, they have more freedom to build.
Right, right. But with the density bonus, though, those units then satisfy the inclusionary so long as obviously they're affordable.
The city would get credit for those affordable units.
Okay, let me see, I wrote down, I was writing down this. Oh, I was just curious. You had two cities, Pomona and South Pass, as it worked for them. How about, what about Pasadena? Was Pasadena, now Pasadena is a little different, because they have a lot of property themselves that they, they can have skin in the game, and they've got that opportunity. But those were the only two where it actually really worked for them in producing affordable units?
Not when they first started, it didn't. Because their percentage was too high.
Yeah, actually Kathy, I think actually worked on Pasadena.
I was actually a little surprised Pasadena wasn't listed as one. What happened in Pasadena, Pasadena adopted their ordinance in 2001. And where the, and to this day, where the majority of development has occurred is in the downtown area, in the old Pasadena area, which already had fairly high density standards to begin with. And then folks used the density bonus. And when they used the density bonus, exactly as you said, they fulfilled both the inclusionary housing requirement and the density bonus. So then, probably 20, 19, 20, 20 plus or minus, the city council got really annoyed with that. And said, we're not getting anything that we didn't get just by having our inclusionary, we're not getting anything extra. And so they did a big old study, and then they increased their percentage to 20%. But they're still seeing development. It is just a matter of, they're going to run out of land for where these projects can go. But, no, the Pasadena program's been very successful.
Yeah, I was just curious, and I thought, gee, Pasadena is not on there. Okay, that answers that.
I have a question. Do you have more questions, Madam Mayor?
No, I might have, I'm going to go through all my written notes, go ahead.
I noticed you didn't include Duarte in the list. Didn't they have an inclusionary housing, okay, zoning ordinance, and they put it on pause indefinitely?
That's correct.
Okay.
I jumped up just to say that's correct.
Is there, do you know the reason? There's got to be a reason why they just put it on pause and?
Well, I think what happened, actually, because that's a really old ordinance, that goes way back. And I just don't think there was a huge public desire to have inclusionary in the city. It never got that full support, and so when it went away, I just don't think people noticed.
Okay, thank you.
That, maybe you ought to stand there. But Monterey Park has gone back and forth and back and forth. What is their deal?
You know, that one I don't actually know from personal experience. So, you know, Whittier, I can tell you Whittier.
Sure.
Why not? Whittier had exactly that situation where, and Burbank as well, is they've had inclusionary in their arsenal for a long time. During the recession, they paused. And then, and so then Burbank came back. Whittier's still talking about coming back, but they haven't come back yet.
Well, and the same for us, I mean, this isn't in stone. It can also, as we see how things go, and people that bring projects to us, we can see how it goes. But that was, that's my biggest concern, that because most in Monrovia are very concerned with density, that you would be creating an incentive to be more dense. So that's the concern.
And just one more comment about cities. Claremont's another good example, where they changed up their whole ordinance. They started in 2007, they changed it up in 2012 because of the recession, they changed it again in 2021. And the city manager mentioned it, just, you do need to stay in tune with what's happening in both the market and the financial market.
Right, well, as Dylan said, you said to review the in-lu fees every year, and just overall, I mean, real estate markets go up and down and all around. So, you know, if you're reviewing it to make sure that you're providing the most, the best incentives to build the projects that we're looking for.
Can I just add a little bit more clarity on Monterey Parks?
Sure.
It's the actual one that seems to be in everybody's eyes today. Monterey Parks had a fairly high requirement, 15% across the board. So their feasibility study back in 2024 did, just showed that that was too high for them, which is kind of, is the importance of, you know, looking at that financial analysis that was prepared and hoping that guides you on your decision of where to go with this. Because you don't want to set it too high, because it will discourage development, and that's what Monterey Park's really seeing. Now that they've kind of paused it, they're keeping it on pause for a little bit longer until they figure out what they want to do.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Yes, Edwards?
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for all of the time. I know that was a lot of time spent helping to work it through and figuring out what would be the, makes the most sense. And I just think this is exciting, because I think Monrovia has a long history of building during the Renaissance, of building homes, but not only building homes, but actually building affordable homes for a long time. We have many senior communities here, we have some other amenities here, people kind of forgotten that, I think, a little bit. We lost that when redevelopment went away. And this is another chance to get back to that level of, affordable is what we're calling them, but really they're what most people in Monrovia would think is maybe barely what you should pay, because it's probably higher than what your current rent is actually in most instances. Because these are, right, when we look at the thresholds, they're still about like $3,000 a month or something for this low-income affordable unit. Barely affordable for most people. But I do think, though, that when we look at that, and we look at what we've done in Monrovia in the past, we really should, I think this should just apply to the whole city at large. I don't think it makes sense to kind of pick just some locations, especially since we do have high, we have a lot of high-density other areas in Monrovia that aren't included on the map right now, where people are now, would be able to put 10 units and not have to build any inclusionary housing. Or they could use the density bonus. I mean, if they use the density bonus on the state level, they're going to add inclusionary units, or they're going to add affordable units. That's great. But we're going to miss out on some opportunities, and I think that's unfortunate in my mind, that we wouldn't apply it. I also feel like it's less defensible for the city if we're just saying, geez, you happen to own property in that spot, now you have to use the inclusionary zoning. But if you don't, you get a pass. So I think there's an opportunity for people to come after the city and say it's not a very defensible plan currently. So I would really love to see it applied just across the board, and it's not us picking winners or losers, it's just saying, you know, this is something we have to do.
Do the consultants have any, do you have any comments on that, and whether or not you've seen that happen, or pluses, minuses?
No, there's a lot of flexibility for the city to decide how you want to do it. Cities are, the communities we've worked with, it goes both ways, areas of the city and citywide, so it's 100% city's decision on that.
On the, on the list that you gave us, you said there were, how many cities of those? How many are citywide? How many of them are just areas?
Give me one moment, please.
Asking the tough questions.
So for the San Gabriel Valley. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them were citywide.
And that's out of the, yeah, seven out of the 10?
Two, three, four, yeah, there was four actually, so four were limited to areas of the city.
I would just point out in the, there's a memo that's part of the attachment this evening, it's titled Sage Crest. It was part of the technical analysis they did of the 10 in the San Gabriel Valley, seven have citywide inclusionary housing ordinances.
Yeah, and when I said four were limited, we did include San Dimas, which has it on hold right now. Or it may not be applicable, because it applies to redevelopment areas.
I have a question. Is there a process where property owners could petition the city and say, we want a certain neighborhood to be a new inclusionary zoning area? Is there some process where they could do that, or no?
They would, I mean, the planning commission and the council make decisions on all zoning, so they would have to petition you directly, and you would have to direct staff to go back through the public hearing process, or they would have to go through a referendum on the ordinance itself.
Let me ask Sherry.
Yes.
Would that be difficult to do?
It would be running through another public hearing process, so if, I guess if a new?
I want to analogize it to creating a historic district. Is it, would it be something akin to that?
It would be, the idea would be really, I don't know if we'd actually realistically get it from your property owners. Usually it's from a developer who's replacing existing development and wanting to do a project. But it would be a standard, a public hearing process. It would maybe begin with a study session.
But it could be done.
Absolutely.
And then what is the cost to the developer for a zoning, request for a zoning change like that?
Well, it's a couple of thousand dollars.
The reason I say that is because Monrovia's a dynamic city, and I want us to have, to be able to react to change in the market.
Absolutely.
And I just want to make sure that we have that mechanism in place so that people can do that.
Absolutely.
Again, analogous to historical district.
And I think the idea is that if this moves forward and gets adopted, it's not an end-all. As with all ordinances, we need to keep monitoring it, looking at what our productions are, what our unattended consequences ended up being, and adjust. And looking at the fee, and with any, any new ordinance, we have to run through and monitor and test. And I think, thinking about, you know, if we go citywide or in these directed areas, the one takeaway that I took when I was looking at all the cities is you also saw variations on the applicability of fees. So when it was citywide, your threshold in some of those cities were 10-plus or higher. The fee was also very depending on citywide versus areas. So those are just things, nuances to be aware of.
Variations thereof.
Is there a reason why? I'm just curious, that we didn't start with citywide? Is there, I heard you say because it was more dense there. I think the better question would be, in Monrovia as a state's, to Beldon's point, what area in Monrovia, when we talk about citywide, could this be considered other high-density spots in Monrovia, if you know from the top of your head?
Yeah, let me, I have a map here that, okay, so this one, this is our zoning, our zoning map, okay? So the yellow areas are our single-family zoned areas, the orange, orangier-yellow areas are our light, medium-density areas. Those are the areas that are, contain really Monrovia's older neighborhoods, existing housing that's 50 years or older. The majority of those lots are a lot smaller and really could not accommodate.
20 and under, 20 units and under, is that what you're saying?
Fewer than that. These are lots that have three and four units. When we see the development recycle in these lots, we're seeing the PUDs, the four units. We're seeing ownership units. We're also seeing the most ADU production on these multifamily housing lots, where the, there's this balance between the preservation of older homes and the stitching in of affordable housing ADUs.
So, that makes sense, but that also means that we, it would have no impact on that if we just included them, right? If somebody's going to put in a four-unit complex and for sale, like, this doesn't apply to them.
So.
And then, so like, it has no impact on the current status, but if somebody does decide to put two lots together and build 20 units, we could come in and say, well, that's nice that you could do it, but you need to put in some inclusionary affordable units.
Right, and so staff hasn't done a thorough analysis on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So what we did was, we looked at historically, over the last three years, where have our large projects gone, five-plus or more? And there are some outliers, which this captures. So we have an 11-unit in all, near Olive and Walnut. So hypothetically, if someone used the density bonus here, or waivers, you could get a project that may have neighborhood compatibility impacts, similarly to the one on South Ivy. This is just, you know, we can't, we don't know the future, and there's always going to be a what-if. And we can propose, this is, staff's proposal is based on the general plan vision, and that's how it was lined, and that's how our consultants presented it in the feasibility study as well, based on where the dense areas are allowed to be built in the city.
Wasn't the original, the version of the inclusionary housing ordinance we saw previously not focused just on a few locations?
No, actually.
It was only just those locations?
Station Square, staff expanded the area to include not just Station Square and South Myrtle Avenue, but the east, the West Corridor, all regional housing, I mean, all of our arena sites, any project that was looking for a general plan amendment, and any by-right housing in a non-residential area.
Was that the housing element 2021?
It incorporated the housing element of 2021, yes.
I do have another question. In terms of the in-lu fee, years ago, Monrovia used to have programs where we, first-time homeowners, and also, I think there might have been some for repairs and things like that, and they were liens on the home, and then it was paid back at the time the house was sold. Could we use those, the in-lu fees for things like that? Okay, that's an easy one. Okay, any other questions of staff?
Just two more. One, I do, the density bonus, or, sorry, not density bonus, the amount we're charging is the in-lu fee, is that roughly comparable to what other cities are charging?
Sherry mentioned this during her presentation, it does vary widely by area based on housing prices and affordable prices within those areas. And so the fees do vary significantly. The examples that are used, I actually worked on a number of them, were all based on the affordability gap. So it wasn't, it wasn't discounted, it wasn't a premium put to it. It was, you should be neutral as to building on-site or paying the in-lu fee. That's the concept. And so this fee is not, it's not dramatically higher than other cities that are using the affordability gap. But there are cities who've done heavily discounted in-lu fees because they were trying to encourage in-lu fee revenue.
Got it, thank you. And I think just my last question is, so the state density bonus is on the table right now, anyone can use it. Why do we need to wait for any density bonus on our side before we, like, I think we should just move forward with this ordinance now and not have to wait for us to tackle another planning, zoning effort, and density bonus to have that discussion? I just don't want this one to be slowed down by another effort.
Yeah, we can definitely move this one forward. We actually already have a draft of the density bonus. It's one of our key housing programs, so staff was just trying to keep us moving forward on our housing programs. But we can definitely take it separately.
I'm not sure I understood that.
So one of the concepts of the inclusionary housing is, when we take the ordinance, staff had intended also bringing the state density bonus, there's been a lot of changes. So when you present, when staff is talking with developers.
It's already there anyways, I mean, we've got to comply with it.
It's a lot. So when staff's talking about inclusionary housing, we can flip, go right here in the municipal code, and here's our density bonus requirements. It's there, it facilitates, it's easy. There's no requirement that we have to do it concurrently. It is a requirement, a housing program requirement that we do it.
But regardless of whether or not we update our plans, we have to comply But regardless of whether or not we update our, our plans, we have to comply with state, the state, so it has to happen regardless.
So we could bring it a month later, two months later. So you wouldn't, yeah.
They're not tied.
Correct, yeah. Right, okay. Well, I, I think I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that we want to go forward, but given your recommendation is for specific areas and given Mr. Belden's questions, and we can talk about this as a group, it sounds like maybe we would want more, a little more analysis on the district and citywide, so that through the process, through the planning department, then coming back to us, we'd have more information and analysis on whether it should be just certain areas versus citywide?
And there's a, there's a middle ground where there's a process where additional zones can be added?
You can do that now.
Okay.
Correct? Yeah, you can do that now. We don't need to, from what I understand, you don't have to add that in. You can go and ask for a zoning change on your project.
Right.
Just pay the money.
Yeah, only takes time and money, right? So is that, does that sound what you're looking at? Do you have any questions of us?
Just, I just want to repeat what I think I heard, was that your recommendation was to keep moving forward with this, but also keep considering the potential to do a citywide ordinance?
Right, some, some further analysis on there. Go with your recommendations, but we'd like to look a little deeper into that citywide versus areas.
Okay.
And we don't care, we have to comply with the state anyways. That, that, the bonus density thing, that can come later. You've got a lot on your plate.
Thank you, very understood. We know what we need to do.
All right. Thank you very much to our consultants and to staff. And with that, do we have anything further to discuss?
I think they both, both staff and the consultant Sage Crest did a great job with a very complex subject.
Thank you for that extra work too, the surveys and just really letting us understand what's going on around the meetings.
The report was done excellent. Were very easy to understand, so I can't overstate that. Along, I really, really appreciate the oversight. I can't overstate that either. The oversight is definitely there.
Okay, yeah, the success is only as good as your oversight and enforcement. That's always the hitch. Okay, all right. Well then, with that, then we will adjourn our study session at 6:42. And we will convene then our regular meeting at 7:30 here in these chambers.